Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's September 26, 2017 Board Business Meeting. Ms. Goins, please call the roll.
Board Member Jones, Board Member Orgel, Board Member Woods, Board Member Love, Board Member McCormick, Board Member Avant, Board Member Bibbs, Board Member Cornell, Chair Caldwell.
Here.
You have five present.
We have a form. Six, I thought.
Six, sorry.
That's new math. So with that, I'd like to recognize the color guard for this afternoon is from the Army Junior ROTC Unit of Cordova High School. The national flag is being carried by Cadet Peyton. The Tennessee State Flag is being carried by Cadet Heis. The flags are protected by color guards Boyce and Cadet Guards. And as we remain standing for a moment of silence, please remember those impacted by the numerous hurricanes Harvey, Irma, Maria, as well as those touched by the earthquake in Mexico with over 300,000 lives lost. And think about all the children and teachers that have been affected by this. So a moment of silence, please. You may be seated. In keeping with Shelby County Schools' acknowledgement of the of arts education as being vital for college, career, and life readiness, tonight's spotlight is on the arts. And we would, on the arts, would like to recognize five Shelby County School Orf music teachers who have spent three summers working on full Orf certification. The Orf approach is a way of introducing and teaching children about music on a level that they can easily comprehend. In Orf music, classrooms imitation, experimentation, and personal expression occur naturally as students become confident, lifelong musicians, and creative problem solvers. Teachers who completed the Orf Certification Level III course this past summer at the University of Memphis Summer Orf Institute are John Travel Busl, Crump Elementary, Lauren Fiveash, Richland Elementary, Edward Murray, White Station Elementary, Melanie Scarborough, Evans Elementary, and Tina Dawn Womack, Kate Bond Elementary. And don't have to tell you, but teachers come forward and have for a photo opportunity. Tonight, we will also feature a special performance from the Idowal Elementary Advanced Recorder Ensemble, under the direction of Alan Moody and Principal Mr. Randy Thompson. Mr. Moody, in addition to being the Orf music specialist at Idowal, also happens to be the recorder instructor for the University of Memphis Summer Orf Institute. His music programs have been a very positive influence on the culture and climate of the school and its relationship with the community. The Idowal Advanced Recorder Ensemble has performed on the national level at the American Orf Shulwork Association's 2015 National Professional Development Conference in Nashville, Tennessee. Idowal is one of six pilot elementary schools in the Memphis Symphony Orchestra and Shelby County Schools' collaboration known as the Orfs Orchestra Partnership, where the Orf music students and the orchestra performed a complete program together. Here is the Idowal Elementary Advanced Recorder Ensemble performing a preview of one of this year's MSO SES Orf Orchestra selections, the Korean folk song, "Aurang." Thanks again to Mr. Moody and Principal Thompson and the Idowal Elementary Advanced Recorder Ensemble, and congratulations to the Level III certified Orf music teachers. You have the opportunity to hear these students again in their side-by-side concert with the Memphis Symphony Orchestra at Idowal one week from now on Tuesday, October 3, 2017, at 6:00 PM. And Dr. Schultz will be there, but that shouldn't keep you from going. The question is now on, is on the approval of the agenda, and are there any amendments, I believe, Dr. Griffin?
Chair Caldwell, first, I want to thank Superintendent Hobson and the board members for allowing me to sit in for him on tonight, so I do thank you in advance for that. I would like to make one amendment, item 13.3, Mid-South Communications Foundation, the radio tower lease to be pulled.
Are there any further additions or subtractions? Seeing none, we are now ready to vote on approval of the agenda.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chair Caldwell?
Aye.
You have eight ayes.
Next, we'll have public comment. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at meetings of local Boards of Education. However, Board policy provides that not more than 30 minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comment. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization that he or she are with or representing, if any, and the subject of the presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who is disruptive or does not adhere to the Board rules. The timer projected on the screen to your right and directly behind the board will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and when you hear two bells, your time has expired. Every person will have one and a half minutes of each to make their comments. And we'll start with Keith Williams, Derry Phillips, Joyce Mason.
Mr. Superintendent in his absence, Dr. Griffin, who's serving as chair, President Caldwell, board members all, I am Keith Williams, the Executive Director of the Memphis and Shelby County Education Association at 126 Flicker Street. There was a time in this city, in a not-too-distant past, when this school system was the premier school system of the southeast. In fact, we had a monopoly on attracting and holding quality and best educators in the southeastern part of the United States. In short, we were the pick of the litter. Today, we find ourselves in a very difficult situation with a teacher shortage, and the outlook looks even dimmer. In fact, teachers are continuing to leave this district at a very rapid pace on a daily basis. This email I will share with you from a teacher that I received on Friday. "Mr. Williams, I resigned today. I could no longer accept the unprofessional treatment from my principal and the disrespect of my time. I am the fifth teacher on my hall of 11 teachers to resign since August 1st. It is not the work, it is the culture and climate of the district that demands my personal time. I spent, I sent 15 pages of lesson plans last night at 11:00 PM to my principal. This is only because I did not have the time during the day of which my planning time is consumed with PLC madness. But again, thank you for all that you do, I'm out." Board members, this is only one of the many emails that I receive on a daily basis to address this serious problem with culture and climate in this school system. Compensation, benefits, the taught curriculum, and other things also seem to be leading us into obscurity. How many of you recognize the amount of money this district has spent on a very whimsical, what I believe to be, curriculum that is addressing the mathematical needs of this district? A curriculum that not even teachers are pleased with. I would implore you to visit what's going on in the school system and to do all that you can to right-size this issue.
Good evening. My name is Derry Phillips, MSCA Millennial Membership Chair, 126 Flicker Street. According to Gordon and Crabtree, an alarming 40% to 50% of new teachers hired in a given year will leave the teaching profession within five years. The research is true, especially if there is no shared decision-making and personnel are forced to choose one option. Several of my colleagues have already left our district due to these practices, but I believe in us. There are over 4,000 policy holders with American Fidelity alone, which is over half of the human capital within our district. I myself hold a short-term policy, and I have had to use it. Millennials represent the majority of personnel within the U.S. according to the U.S. Census data, and emerging majority within our district. The research further advises millennials must have choice like the democracy we live in. As I review the board docs, I do not see where we have input. It is even more alarming I would be auto-enrolled without consideration. Am I going to have to pay first just to opt out? There are no explanation of benefits, and the board doc indicates an increase in premium if enrollment drops below 25%. That is already the hypothesis if more than 75% of eligible employees have policies with other carriers. I am satisfied with my current policy and its premium. Please preserve and extend to us the professional courtesy to choose. Payroll deduction is convenient. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you. After Ms. Mason, we'll have Scott Miley, Talisa Echols, and Tequila Rucker.
Joyce Mason, Hope Academy, Bartlett, Tennessee. I do not appreciate how the district continue to change the bonus payout for teachers. We received in writing one amount, only to learn that the money has been reduced. This is not fair to teachers who have served our due diligence in the district, not just the new teachers and the teachers who are returning or are joining the district. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board, my name is Scott Miley with American Fidelity. I'm the state manager for the north half of Mississippi and Shelby County. We also represent Tipton, all the municipal districts, DeSoto, everyone around you. I'm here to speak about the RFP that concerns short-term and long-term disability. We represent about 4,444 policies throughout the school district in Shelby County alone. In 2016, the same RFP was vetted. It was pulled before the, it could be heard by the board because it was improperly presented. Mercer had prepared that RFP. They had specifically excluded all of the existing partners who are in the school district now. This RFP has been resubmitted this year with a lot of questions. First time there were 17 questions, this year there's 51. In this particular RFP, prepared by Mercer Health and Benefits, who was to be the consultant, we thought, ultimately, there was a question, if you'll refer to questions issued on the website for the RFP. Question 35 says, "Will broker commissions of 7% be paid to, what will the relationship of this party be to the willing RFP bid company?" Answer, "As Shelby County Schools' broker, commissions will be paid to Mercer Health and Benefits LLC." Mercer is an independent broker, not affiliated with any insurer. If you'll go to mercermarketplace/metlife, I think you'll find that connection to the company that has presumably won this bid. There's going to be forced placement of policies. I think it would be equivalent to them telling us that on January 1, we're going to change our homeowners and auto insurance to one company, and if you'd like to get out of that company, you're welcome to do that. I don't think that's acceptable to the board at this time. We've always had a wonderful relationship. I've been here since November 1 of 1982. My office is on Flicker Street. I'm about 100 yards behind the building. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Talisa Echols. I'm an MSC rep. I'm Alton Elementary. My address is 126 Flicker. Fair, firm, and consistent, those three simple words are all that Fair, firm, and consistent, those three simple words are all that we ask. Why is it so hard to be fair with all employees? Fairness, impartial and just treatment or behavior without favoritism or discrimination. That's respectable, trustworthy, honorable, righteous, and on the level. Firm, in a resolute and determined manner, that's solid, concrete, and impenetrable. Consistent, acting or done in the same way over time is especially so as to be fair or accurate. That's dependable, steady, true, and uniform. So many times, SCS has let teachers down when they have promised one thing and did something different. When can we expect this district to be true to its words? If you promise to level teachers up, everyone whose pay was affected when we had a hiring freeze should have been leveled up. You pick and choose how you affect our lives daily. You look at Izone, you took Izone's pay off teachers' base salary and then leveled them up. Why didn't you do the same for teachers with Masters plus 45? Fair is fair. We give 110% every day, and I ask that you do the same when it comes to being fair with teachers' pay. If you promise to provide special education to teachers with the $5,500 bonus over three year period, why come back? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And after Ms. Rucker, we have Lisa Jorgensen, Sharonda Thompson, and Danette Stokes.
Tequila Rucker, 6520 Stage Road. Good evening. I would like to first start off by apologizing for anything that was stated at last month's board meeting that may have offended anyone. I would also like to thank Superintendent Hobson, Dr. Griffin, Dr. Whitelaw, Chief Stockton, Dr. Ray, for following up with teachers, engaging UEA about collaborative ways that we can work together to improve the working conditions of our teachers. I would also like to express a thanks for Board Member Cornell, Board Member Avant, Board Member Love, and Board Member Jones for sharing concerns that have been shared with you on behalf of educators and also holding the district accountable for the things that you've heard. Now I'd like to address compensation. We would like to ask that you all revisit the Invest In Our Teachers Compensation Plan to include veteran teachers, ESPs, counselors, facilitators, mental health specialists, and all PLCs, and everyone in the schools that support our students. Please understand that when we ask that you listen, we equate listening to taking action. With that being said, I petition you all that as you listen to the concerns being shared tonight, put yourself in the place of parents, teachers, and most importantly, our students. Remember, happy teachers are productive teachers.
Good evening, Lisa Jorgensen, United Education Association, the local affiliate of the Tennessee Education Association and the National Education Association, 743 Beasley, Memphis, Tennessee. Thank you for being here tonight. During the September 19th SCS School Board Work Meeting, a report was given about preschool computer assessments, data, and the kindergarten computer assessments. I wanted to clarify the experience of the SCS kindergarteners, five- and six-year-olds, who have already taken the iReady Math Computer Assessment. iReady is a math benchmark computer assessment also given to the kindergarteners three times a year. Teachers do wonder why the test is given because the MAPS NWEA test is given within two weeks of the iReady Math Test window, three times a year. The iReady website indicates that kindergarten students should receive several lessons in digital readiness before they take the test. Having supervised or proctored these iReady tests for approximately 10 tests over three years in several classrooms, it's important to understand that these children usually do not have math skills practice before they are expected to take the iReady test. Please do the math. If each kindergarten teacher is required to provide the testing environment on laptops, the four different tests, iReady, Achieve 3,000 SmartAnts, and MAPS NWEA for math and also for reading, those students may lose four tests times three hours of laptop setup, log-on, test, log-off, take apart, and put away. Missing two weeks of instruction each nine weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Thompson and then Ms. Stokes.
Sharonda Thompson, 6520 Bartlett Boulevard, United Education Association. Tonight, I stand in solidarity with our ESPs who help to ensure the academic success of all of our students. To petition the board to fine money in the budget not only for them, but also afford them the same opportunities that educators have for tuition assistance to help with the teacher shortage, help provide pathways for them to find licensure so they can become teachers in the classroom like they aspire to be. I also asked the board to revisit or repeal the board's predecessor's decision according to the Frequently Asked Questions section provided by the Compensation Department that states verbatim, "The SCS School Board voted to no longer pay for advanced degrees and directed SCS administration to develop a performing-based compensation plan. The board vote froze the teacher's salary schedule for existing teachers, and it was only used to establish pay for newly hired teachers. In some cases, it allowed existing veteran teachers on frozen salary schedule to be paid less than the incoming new teachers." On our well pages, is that what it says? And in closing, I would like to give a shout-out to Board Member Ms. Cabibbs and her partnership with Cory Allen, who reached out to one of our members who is a professional school counselor named Teresha Williams at Sheffield High School, where Jarvis Christian College visited her school last week. And as a result, 13 academic scholarships, two choir scholarships, three cheerleader scholarships, two basketball scholarships, and one track scholarship was given out to our babies in SCS. And so what I implore all of our board members to continue to reach out and assist us with helping our students to be successful. Thank you all, and help us with compensation as well. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Danette Stokes, 4100 Mill Branch. I stand before you to ask you to delay EL. The number-one issue is the curriculum implementation, timing, and student learning and growth. The 2016-17 implementation of Eureka Math is a worst-case scenario. We cannot afford to make the same mistake. The Learn and Teach-as-you-go approach, the mid-year implementation of the new curriculum materials, Eureka Math and EL, is very poor planning. For expected and needed student achievement and growth, the timing will be a major impediment. Teachers are concerned that they have not been adequately trained for a new program to start in the middle of the school year. We're being asked to go to training on Saturday and after teaching all day, we're asked to go to training from 4:30 to 6:00 without compensation. We petition you to have the district's Curriculum and Instruction Department to research these concerns and consider some of the suggestions made by United Education Association of Shelby County. We believe it is the district's responsibility to make sure all teachers are adequately trained and prepared to start the EL program in August of 2018. We ask that you delay EL until August 2018, provide adequate training for teachers, allow teachers to return to the previously approved curriculum for the duration of the school year. This will allow the implementation of EL to be appropriate and effective. It would also give the district time to get all materials to teachers and students. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Facisheen Moore, Leslie Owens, and Janice Spillman-Hill.
Good evening. My name is Facisheen Moore, and I'm here with the United Education Association, representing our ESPs. We are looking, oh, okay, we are looking for living wages so that we can live appropriately. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Shirley Cross, and I am with UEA. I am ESP. My address is 1000 Sutton Place. Just wanted to ask a few items today on behalf of ESP to the board. Living wage increase of $17 per hour minimum, professional development classes, accrue time off, career advancement based on degree level and job level, continual employment throughout the school year. Example, summer programs offered by the district. Those programs can be offered to ESP as an option for the 11 or 12-month employment. ESPs do not get paid during the summertime, and it is difficult. Two months is a long time to go without pay. Thank you for your time. I am Shirley Cross, and I am ESP. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Owens, and then Ms. Spillman-Hill.
Hello. My name is Janice Hill. I'm a Shelby County school parent, and I'm here to serve as a voice for the kids, the 110,000 to 120,000 students in the school district. My kids have gotten rid of their eczema in nine months. They're off allergy medications. They're less picky eaters. They don't miss school, and they don't go visit the doctor because they have proper nutrition. I'm a cancer survivor, so I know the importance of nutrition. It changes your DNA, and it changes your genes. And when you look at someone who goes to work or school for eight hours a day, you know that if they're not eating a balanced meal, that they're going to be frustrated and angry, and they're going to lack concentration. So I wanted to tackle about six points that I thought were very important. The first one, we need to get back to cooking in the schools. 90% of the foods are cooked off-site. They're prepackaged, they're re-cooked at schools by being reheated on the stove top and in microwaves. Number two, we need to improve the working conditions for cafeteria workers. They get no paid vacation, no bereavement days, no holidays, no sick time. Number three, we need to improve the decisions made after the federal contract is negotiated between the USDA and SCS to allocate money to better options for food. Number four, we need to choose new vendors and make competitors bid on the best food versus only the cost of the food. And number five, we need more collaboration between SCS using their resources with TV and radio, specifically 88.5, to get the messages out about programs and resources offered to parents. And number six, we need to hold the decision-makers responsible in regards to what vendors we use. We're educating leaders of the future. We're creating an environment where the food is fed to our kids like they're inmates at 201 Poplar. We need leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Spillman-Hill. Then we'll move on to Morella Scruggs, Sidney Hill, and Fran Wilson. Morella Scruggs, Sidney Hill, and Fran Wilson.
Hi, my name is Sidney Hill, and I'm in the fourth grade, and I wanted, I came up here today to tell you guys that I really want you guys to change the school lunches because I, whenever I'm in class, I always feel sick, and I don't, I don't pay attention, and I get sleepy, and my head starts hurting. And I just want you guys to change the school lunches so I can get a better education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Morella Scruggs, and I have two kids that are in Shelby County schools right now. And right about now, well, this time last year, I did a health project with their school, and it was like Health Week. And I'm actually a chef, and I demonstrated different health techniques with them. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I demonstrated different health techniques with them. I found out that a lot of kids like different salads. A lot of them like fruit, like yoke, what is it, yogurt parfait? And majority of them like celery with peanut butter, peanut butter jelly sandwiches. But they were kindergarten through the fifth grade, so the majority of them, they were excited when they heard health. They were excited for exercise, they were excited for healthy foods. And I have two kids with me right now. I don't know if they're able to say anything, but I have a son that this, he likes to eat anything and everything, especially healthy food. And lately, he's been coming home, he's like, well, actually, I don't know if it's a problem for letting him say anything because he can tell you better than I can. Lebran, Lebranin. Tell them about, if you like, do you like the food that's at school?
I like the food that's at school because...
No, I'm talking about how you've been saying that food. Not what you wanted. Tell them about when you had nachos, that...
I'm sorry, but your time's up, but I think, I think we got your point. Thank you, ma'am, for speaking. And I have a Fran Wilson listed, but seeing nobody, that ends the public speaking. Oh, I'm sorry, another page, excuse me. Natasha Partey, Raquel Williams, and Barbara Hawkins.
Good evening, Board, and guest members. I'm Natasha Partey, 341 Carriage Court. I'm here in support of Nutrition Services Department of our district. I'm a Nutrition Services Supervisor at Riverwood Elementary School, where we serve over 1,800 meals between the day, breakfast, lunch, and supper daily. Our parents are highly satisfied with the quality of food we serve daily. Many students bring their boxed lunches from home, and they even come through our serving line and eat what we eat instead of what they bring from home. Now, take note, a man convinced against his will is of the same mind still. If someone is convinced of something, you can't change their mind. We have photos of our kitchens and our serving lines. It shows how our students have over five options. Students must select three out of five of those options, one of which must be a fruit or a vegetable to be considered a reversible meal. But most of us know that most children only choose what they're familiar with, so we need our parents and our staff members to help educate, and we will do that as well to let the children know what they should pick. To ensure the public and the board that we're serving nutritious food and good-tasting meals, our vendors and brands are some of the same items that we have in our grocery stores. We have 100% chicken products with no soy or any other additives. We have 100% low-sodium beef products, and our grains are whole grain. One thing I want to leave you with, I can go, we all could go to Kroger. You can pick, you can, we can pick the same food items. One person could overcook it, one person could undercook it, one person can cook it perfectly, but it's the same item. We will assure you, the board, that we will be in our kitchen, monitoring and maintaining our kitchens to make sure we're on the same page. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Good evening. Raquel Williams, MSCA, 126 Flicker Street. Thank you for allowing us to make comments this evening. I would like for the board to reconsider naming MetLife as the district's only disability provider without getting subscriber input. As I understand it, the RFP is going to require subscribers to go and see doctors who are designated by the district. And as far as I know, this is a practice that is typically utilized in workman's compensation cases. And so, taking that into consideration, also the fact the district is not contributing to the monies that the subscribers have to pay in, I really would like for you all to reconsider your decision in making MetLife the district's only disability insurance provider without our input.
Next, Ms. Hawkins, then we'll have Brenda Shield, Nicole, I think Lucy, and Elise Scott.
Good afternoon. I'm Barbara Hawkins with the United Shelby County Council, PTA. Ms. Rosemary is going to present some information from Bill Haslam, our governor, and from Charles Scott, president of the United Shelby County PTA. and from Charles Scott, President of the United Shelby County PTA.
Good evening. The absence of Superintendent Hobson, Dr. Sharon Griffin, the Chair, Mr. Chris Caldwell, and the School Board members. Mrs. Winters at one twenty-six Flicker Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one one four, United Shelby County PTA Family Engagement Chair. I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of President Scott for the United County PTA. I would like to give a brief report. Due to the weather, the council had to cancel the meeting Greek event last Monday, August the twenty-second, last month, August twenty-second. Please see attached letter from Governor of Tennessee, Governor Haslam, recognizing the efforts of our State President, Mrs. Cheryl Floyd. Finally, President Scott has issued a personal challenge to each Board member, Superintendent Hobson and his senior staff, to meet or exceed his personal donation of three hundred dollars to the United PTA. Donations of any amount are much needed and welcome, and we look to serve the needs of our local PTA schools. Thanks again for allowing me to opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the United Shelby County Council.
I, I think I need to tell you that this copy of this check, you can read the ABA number and the account number on it. So I think you ought to take this paper back out, release that page.
Okay.
I don't think Mr. Scott wants that kind of information going out.
Good afternoon, my name is Brenda Shields. I'm on behalf of SEIU, the Food Service Supervisors Union, as well so as a parent, a grandparent in this district, and a food service supervisor. We are professionals at our job. We are Safe Serve certified. We offer fresh fruit and vegetables every day and we work on a wholesome wellness policy on behalf of Michelle Obama. Fresh vegetables that we offer on a daily basis. Green, fresh greens, fresh sweet potatoes, baked potatoes. And for peanut butter, we offer soy butter because a lot of children are, have allergies to peanut butter. So we can't give them that. But, every day, our children come, the district children come through those lines and they have a choice of their own. They choose their food. We don't give them a plate. They choose the product that they want to eat. And we are professional. We are held at a high standard of a ninety-five and above health inspection score and we are Safe Serve certified. So I want to thank you all for listening to us and our hearing to what we had to say today.
Nicole Lacy, Chief Communications Officer from Memphis Area Transit Authority, thirteen seventy Levy Road. Greetings Shelby County Board of Commissioners. I wanted to attend this meeting to communicate that MATA is working with the transportation team at Shelby County Schools. Recently, our team met with Chief Beth Phalen, Transportation Manager, Stephen Wery, and Janika Oglesby, Transportation Director. We discussed preliminarily exploring launching a pilot for Central High School since it's served by the most MATA routes and has the highest number of students located within a one-quarter mile of our existing routes. Again, this is very preliminary, but we will continue to work together, exploring how this pilot will be implemented and other details. In addition, I understand from Chief Phalen that Board Member Woods has inquired about transportation options for students who participate in after-school programs, which we will also explore further. In closing, I just want to thank you for your time and your cooperation with Memphis Area Transit Authority.
Well, good evening. I am Alix Scott. I'm a Level Five teacher. I have been since I've started. I live at seventy-nine twenty-two Pine Frost Lane and I have been teaching and teaching for fourteen years. All right, so today, this is kind of good that I get to sum it all up. A teacher life. I don't think anybody on the Board or in any type of high-up level has stopped, actually stopped to think about what all consists of a teacher life. At this time, I'm a single mom with two kids and my life consists of not above teaching. I want you to listen to these other things that I'm asked to do daily and weekly. Lesson plans, which as you heard, can take anywhere from four different subjects. Each one can be anywhere from three to seven to ten pages. I'm asked to do four teas. I'm asked to attend PLC meetings during my planning time. I'm asked to keep up with Power School. I'm asked to do Tuesday weekly folders and newsletters to my parents. I'm asked to do whiteboard protocol. I'm asked to monitor kids on EZCBM. I'm asked to do SmartYans with, as you see, I'm a kindergarten teacher with five-year-olds that come to me that can't even hold a pencil, but I'm asked to instruct them on how to do computer. I'm asked to do NWEA. I'm asked to do progress reports. I'm asked to do report cards. I'm asked to do report card assessing. I'm asked to do I-ready. I'm asked to do RTI checking. I'm asked to do a kindergarten portfolio this year that I've not been properly trained on. I'm asked to do a KEI program that I'm not, I've been trained on, but I'm not going to say properly. And then I'm asked to do after-school training, which happens, like she said, from four-thirty to six. That's the teacher's life and that's on top of me having to teach twenty-three, five, and six-year-olds by myself each day. I don't think y'all have stopped to think about all that you asked us to do. And then you wonder why we're all defecting and going somewhere else. I need my life to be less stressful. I need for y'all to come talk to me and understand the stress in the life of a teacher. A Level Five teacher.
Thank you, ma'am.
Level Five.
The last name I have is Pamela Moses.
Hello, how you doing? Sorry I'm late. I had another meeting at the library. P Moses, Black Lives Matter Memphis. And I just wanted to come because there's been a outcry from the schools and the parents for the inefficiency of the self-love that our children do not have. And I have contacted several schools in the past to try to bring things to promote not only black history but black liberation and to make children understand who they are. And I think that's important in Memphis and I think that you need to include it in the curriculum. And if you would like, we have a Brown versus Board of Education Committee that specializes in that and we would like for you to try to reach out to us and other organizations to teach our children how to love themselves. Because once they love themselves, they will be able to not only love others but be better students. And that's important. It's a very diverse Board. And as a diverse Board, you understand that we're all different. And as a person who has dealt with things in Memphis that I'd never thought would happen, I know that the education part is crucial into making Memphis a better city. And in order for us to do that, Ms. Love and other people who are on the School Board, you have to make the right decisions here in order for the schools to follow. You must lead by example. And I'm just asking you to please try to employ more things in the curriculum that teach our children how to love each other and other children how to love us. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments. The question now is on the approval of the minutes and I'd like for us to be able to take the August twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen business meeting minutes as well as the September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen work session minutes. Are there any corrections? Seeing no corrections, we are now ready to vote on the minutes as...
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chair Caldwell?
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That item passes. Next, we'll have committee reports and, first is my report. Just would like to say that it has been a privilege and an honor to serve as Chair this last school year. I tried to do my best and I hoped I moved, I hope I moved the needle in the, in the right direction. So thank you for putting up with me for a full year. There are not many people that like to do that, so thank you very much. And any extra time, I'm willing to see the Board first. Board Member Cornell?
Now, you know I would say something. Chairman Caldwell, I want to thank you for all your effort for the past year and you really gave everything and you sacrificed a lot to try to get this train running the right way. And, you know, if we don't, if we don't have accountability and save money and, and watch the dollars, I think Mr. Swab used to say on Bill Street, he'd say if you watch the pennies, the dollars will follow. And when you watch the dollars and you save money, and we have saved millions of dollars all working together, and that's money that can go to the teachers and to the kids. And so, I want to, we want to thank you for, for that year.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Board Member Love?
I want to echo what Board Member Cornell stated, but I also want to give kudos to all of the previous Chairs since I've been a Board Member. You know, each one of you have uniquely moved the district in a, in a, in a good path. So, thank you Chair for your service and thank you to my fellow Chairs.
Thank you. I see a couple more lights. If y'all are going to do this, I could give you, I can give you Cheryl Caldwell's phone number and maybe get me some, some brownie points. I don't know who was next, but... Board Member Bibbs?
Thank you Chair. I just want to say thank you for the past year. I think I've learned a lot from you this past year. I am very thankful for the opportunity to serve in tandem with you and just for my fellow colleagues around how we've moved forward this past school year. Super excited about the work we have done and looking forward to the work that will happen in the next year. Thanks Chair.
Thank, thank you. And Board Member Jones?
Thank you, Chair Caldwell. This goes with the seat that you're sitting in. I've sat in that seat and so I know that there are a lot of obstacles, a lot of things that you have to do that take away from more time than it does regular Board Members. So, I just want to thank you for all you did the last year to try to study this, this ship, the Board, and to try to make sure that we were informed, we were doing the right things in terms of children and our commitment to all the employees. And so, I know it's not an easy job. I've been there and I just want to thank you for everything you did.
Thank you. And if you thought that much of me, you should have told me before I decided to be Chair.
And tell you, you have to go through it.
So with that, we'll move on to the Academic Performance Committee Report.
Thanks Chair. So we actually have had quite a bit to have happened in this past month regarding academic performance. We've had, just on last week, a meeting with the academic team talking about our test scores, how, where we are, what our projections will be for K-8, but more importantly, really talking about what it looks like to roll out an academic plan moving forward. And Dr. Griffin has, working on a community engagement plan. And that's really important as we talk about what academic plan looks like for our community. It is involving the community in the process. We, I think, are very clear on standards are different, but most importantly, we need to be sure around having all buy-in from every community possible. So, in that, when I say community, I mean teachers, parents, our community partners around being able to move our students forward. We cannot do this work alone. So, very excited about what that looks for, looks like. We also have had a CAC meeting where we will be bringing that back to academic performance next week, the first week of October, to the Board to go over all of the suggestions and the things that they have voted on saying that they would like for us to move forward with. Within that work, we will be moving forward with, working with a consultant, Natalie McKinney, that is going to help us close up shop around what that work looks like. Although she is no longer with us, she actually is going to help us complete that work. So I think that's real important for us to be able to get that done with fidelity. And I think that's it that I have for academic performance. I just want to thank my colleagues around these committee meetings because I think within this past month, we've been pushing really hard around being prepared academically for our students and looking forward to what a true community engagement plan looks like regarding the academic plan.
Thank you. Next is Audit Budget and Finance Committee Report and that's my report. We met today and talked about the budget timelines, our commitment to move toward budget, student-based budgeting, and then also worked on some details about the new Board Member District Fund allocations. Next, Capital Needs and Facilities?
No report. We haven't had a meeting since last board meeting.
Thank you. Community Outreach and Engagement Committee Report? Evaluation Committee Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met last week and we are in the process of gearing up for the Superintendent's evaluation. We are currently searching for a facilitator to coordinate the evaluation and hopefully we will have that decision in the next week or so and be ready to do the evaluation.
Thank you. Next, Board Internal Operations Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will be meeting next month in October to review upcoming Board policies. As you know, we usually take a little break at the beginning of the school year to allow the, the district to get up and running for the school year, so we will have our next meeting in October.
Thank you. Next, Legislative Advocacy Committee?
No formal report. Mr. Chair, I will indicate that on yesterday I was in DC and had a chance to hear from Kim Ford, the Under-Secretary in, in Washington. And they are moving on the Perkins, hopefully getting the Perkins renewed. And they doubled down on the efforts around CTE and about wanting to make sure that there's still flexibility that allow for districts to really move the needle around career pathways. And so, I just wanted to let you know that that was a positive conversation, so hopefully we'll see some traction on that soon.
Thank you. Next, we have Procurement Report? Committee Report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Procurement Committee met last week and reviewed a report that had been generated by the Council of Great City Schools. I think we had a great presentation from Chief Phalen, who shared how the district is undergoing some pretty radical but very needed improvements within our procurement department. It's also an assessment of where we are, thinking about how we move to a more source-driven model rather than the transactional model that can really support the needs of the district. So, we will be doing follow-up. She will be presenting, once Ms. Allen, the new procurement director's back, we will have a follow-up meeting to wrap up. Oh, Ms. Allen is back. Oh, welcome back, Ms. Allen. Thank you. So, now that Ms. Allen is back, we will be scheduling a follow-up meeting to share some of the other recommendations that have been brought forth with the committee.
And next, we have the Superintendent's Report and I think Dr. Griffin is going to fill in for him.
Yes. Thanks Chair Caldwell and Board Members. I'm going to have Dr. Ray and his team to give a report on the Superintendent's Academy. We were very proud of this academy this summer that provided targeted interventions for students in grades K through five, Tier two and three. And so, at this time, we have a small presentation that we would like to share with the Board.
Good evening, Chairman Caldwell, Members of the Board, Dr. Griffin. I'm very excited about the Superintendent's Summer Learning Academy. I'm just ecstatic and I know Ms. Ava holds this program near and dear to her heart. So, I'm, I'm proud that we were able to serve over sixty-two hundred students. As you recall, we started with only four schools, one thousand students. And so, we challenged the staff because we had so much interest that we had over sixty-two hundred students in over twenty-six hundred schools. Twenty-six locations, I'm sorry. But nevertheless, we had some fabulous gains this summer. We did a pre and post-assessment for students and we saw some fabulous gains, but it speaks to the work of the teachers this summer. It was a six-week program. The teachers gave up their time before and after school to ensure that all the students' academic needs were met. And also, hats off to the principals. And also, hats off to the principals, summer principals as well. We wanted to set the stage and for the culture and climate for learning. So, we tried to establish that on the front end. And the teachers bought in, principals bought in. And I'll have Ms. Mindy Gaia, which is the manager who operated the Summer Learning Academy, to give you the fabulous results. Ms. Gaia.
Good evening. There we go. In our inaugural year of the Superintendent's Summer Learning Academy, you see that we had almost 6,200 students who enrolled in our program. On the slide, it gives you the breakdown of the number of students who came from Shelby County Schools, Achievement School District, charter schools, municipal schools, private schools, and even some from out of the area or out of state. These numbers added up to 297 students outside of Shelby County Schools who enrolled in our Summer Learning Academy and ultimately registered for our schools for the 17, 18 school year. This gave the district a potential $3.9 million budget impact. As we talk about the academic achievement with reading, I want to take just a moment to unpack for you how the reading was measured. We used Achieve 3000 to track our students' literacy progress. And Achieve 3000 uses the Lexile framework to judge the progress that students made during this time period. The Lexile framework measures two things. It measures the difficulty of text and the reading capacity of students. Generally, the Lexile score means that students have a comprehension level of 75% at that level. So, the higher the Lexile level, the higher the reading level for students. On average, our Summer Learning Academy students gained 19 Lexile points over our six-week program. You see, in grade 2, the students had a mean Lexile growth of 26 points. So, students progressed from a starting benchmark of 406 points and ended the program with 425. The academic achievement results for math are just as impressive as the ones for literacy. Our students averaged 26% growth in five weeks' time with double-digit gains in every grade level. Our initial goal for students was to have a 5% to 8% increase in their achievement for math, and double-digit gains is incredible progress. Grade 5 gained 4.8 growth, 4.8 months of growth in our five-week time period. As we talk about the external stakeholders, we were on the news, in media, print media reports, magazine articles. We had approximately 30 to 40 media mentions. All of those were positive or neutral mentions. We also conducted a parent survey that we sent out to all of the parents who students participated in the academy. Of all of the questions they answered, approximately 90% of those gave favorable ratings for the academy. So, we got excellent feedback from our teachers. Our parents were pleased, and you see that the progress from the students really made an impact and helped them be ready for this next school year. Thank you.
So, I will pass out the end-of-the-year summary to all the board members. This, the presentation was just a snapshot of some of the data and some of the things that we're doing. Ms. Gaia was generous because she didn't mention the amount of work. We started this in March, and schools, the Summer Learning Academy started in June. So, approximately 90 days or so, the team, it was truly a team effort. We collaborated with communications, CNI, HR, information technology, and so on, just to pull this off. So, hats off to everybody. Also, the students all received approximately, how many books, Mindy? 20? 25 books to start their own personal library, field trips. All activities were free and paid for before in school, I mean, before and after-school tutoring. We just had a great time this summer. So, I'm just really proud, and I was happy to help lead this work. Thank you.
I have lights from board member Ava.
Dr. Ray, thank you so much for your leadership in this particular initiative. As you know, it really was something that was very personal to me and very dear to my heart that, you know, originally, this was just me saying, how do we address summer slide? And it definitely grew into something that we, as a district, can be proud of. I was really impressed to see the number of students that were able to participate this summer, but more importantly, the growth that happened for our students. So, I appreciate your leadership in moving this forward. I think this is just the first step for us as a district to think about holistically, year-round, what academic enrichment and achievement looks for our kids. I think Dr. Ray and his team also participated in conversations citywide with the National Summer Learning Association, which means that we think about this from start to finish. It is a year-round opportunity for our kids to be ingrained in the things that they need. So, I do appreciate your leadership. I want to thank our fellow board members. I know that some of us got to go and visit some of the summer learning sites. And I'm hopeful that once we get the MAP scores back this first quarter, that we can really see how we are aligned with this summer program and those students and their growth. So, I appreciate the time to just mention that.
Thank you. Board member Cornell.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and I just got a couple of questions here. When you use the math, I guess these kids are being introduced to the new math. Did you have a problem with teachers understanding the new math?
No, they receive professional development, I think a week-long professional development. IREDA was the delivery model. So, teachers were trained, and the teachers were very excited.
Okay, so...
And you see the results.
All right. And now, as far as the kids, the, I'm just going to ask you some very, maybe innocuous questions, but the kids were very happy at the school?
Well, according to the survey, yes.
And did they get out and exercise?
Yes.
And have fresh air and sunshine?
Absolutely.
And did they eat good food?
Yes. They had breakfast, lunch, and possibly a snack. I think they had a snack as well.
And did they get to play and learn at the same time?
That was the main goal.
And scores went up?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think board member Love must have been at one of those camps all summer because she was answering every question, Mr. Board Member Cornell. So, board member Love, you want to share everything with everybody?
I too want to thank you, Dr. Ray, and your staff, and anybody who played a part in the Summer Learning Academy. If you're saying that all we need to do is have a Summer Learning Academy to yield $3.9 million, I think we need to do this every year. But another thing, this is just a suggestion, being that we do have a number of students who are struggling.
Yes.
If this is something that we are going to do next year, I, just a suggestion, go ahead and have conversations with those parents who have students that are struggling to see if we can get more buy-in from them and a better commitment of not just, you know, bringing them on a Monday and Tuesday and not a Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
Absolutely.
And I think this way, we'll see, we'll see a better academic growth.
Absolutely. We actually discussed that in cabinet on yesterday about being very intentional about getting our students and identifying them early and getting students involved.
And getting the buy-in from the parents.
No doubt.
All right.
Board member Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Ray, again, great job. You guys took an idea, ran with it, and implemented it with fidelity, so awesome job there. I had a question about the Lexile range. What's the floor and what's the max? Are those the numbers there?
Each child has their own.
371 through 397? I don't know if... Right, but I still want to know. So, I understand each child has its own score, but what's the lowest a child could have, and what's the highest? Does that help?
If you look at page 8,
Okay.
that gives the Common Core State Standard ranges for each grade level. And then on page 9, it gives the scores, the starting benchmark, and then the final Lexile score for our students.
Okay, so, when it says common, let's take second grade, Common Core standard, 420 to 640. What does that mean? Is that the range that's considered to be proficient?
Yes.
Is that the range? Okay, so that's the proficiency range. And so, then when our students, so that means, so then you're showing on the next page where our students are having gain, but that's the range for our particular students as compared to the Common Core standards?
Exactly. So, you were asking about grade 2. So, the final Lexile score for second-grade students was 397 at the end of the program. And on page 8, it gives you where the range, and you can look at where our students are in relation to the Common Core standardized target range.
That's what I was trying to understand. Thank you. That helps a lot. Go ahead, Dr. Ray.
So, keep in mind, we targeted Tier 2, Tier 3 students. These are students who need to express.
I totally understand that. It was not to say that's not enough. I just wanted to understand the ranges. And again, I guess you, I'm going to blame Ms. Love for talking to me during that time since Billy's not here right now. But, in addition to that, you know, and I think Ms. Love hinted on it as far as the sustainability of these type of programs. And if, Dr. Griffin, if someone could speak to the plans, I'm sure you guys are already having budget conversations right now as we're talking around this type of program being sustained and maintained next year.
Yeah, I can talk about that. I mean, this is a program where it's clear that the ROI is high, and that we are having already conversations in terms of how we're going to sustain this for next year, but also moving forward.
Thank you. And what I'll add to that also, Dr. Griffin and Mr. Johnson, Dr. Ray, you know, the governor has flex funding when it's time to do state budgets. So, while this may not work into the natural BEP funding formula, I think you could make the case for, particularly around our district, that you can make an ask to fund this program over multiple years, especially when you got this type of data to show that return. So, as we start to put together a legislative agenda around, you know, what laws we want to see passed, I do think it's an opportunity to use that relationship that the superintendent, Mr. Chair, Mr. Caldwell built last year and to try to create those additional funding streams to fund this type of program. And I'll close with a comment around, while I always admire the district for our interests, our laser focus on the students we meet the most. I think Dr. Griffin often called it our intensive care, our emergency care students. What an attractive way to also go after students that are on the right track or are high-performing students. And so, look at building those programs. I know the CLUE program does one for like a week or so. But man, wouldn't it be a way to attract students from surrounding districts if you were also saying, if you're SES students or you're going to be an SES student in the fall, we have this type of program for you that, I think that's a competitive advantage for the district.
So, board member Woods, you're exactly right. And we were, we tried to be intentional about doing that this year. If you see, we had so many students outside of the district that chose to come in this program. We targeted Tier 2, Tier 3, but all students were welcome to come, and they did. Many students left the CLUE camp to attend the Superintendent's Learning Academy after the CLUE camp was over. Thank you.
Board member Bibbs.
Thank you, Chair. So, actually, this statement is going to be twofold. First, regarding Superintendent Learning's Academy, I just have to echo what all of my colleagues have already said about how great the program. I'm going to mention again, as we move into budget planning for the next year around, I know this was targeted at K-5. I am absolutely looking forward to something targeted at our middle schoolers and our high schoolers because they definitely need that touch as well. And I think to board member Woods's point around using this also as an alternate way of being able to attract students back to the district, but not just our, you know, intensive care students. I think our students who, you know, really who are hitting the mark already, just showing them what we're like to be able to come on back home.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Ms. Bibbs. As you're aware, we did middle and high school. We had a small treatment for them with the Bridge Program. But that's something that my team and I will take a strong look at and hopefully have some recommendations to get to the superintendent.
Looking forward to that. Now, Chair, my other point is I absolutely forgot, and I figured the best time to say this is in the superintendent's report around that the superintendent and I will be in New Orleans on Friday accepting the award for Shelby County School Board. We received an award from Council of Urban Boards of Education as being one of the best performing boards, and that really speaks to our work as the Board of Nine and the superintendent together as 10 people working together how we push a district forward. And that doesn't mean that we're perfect, let me be clear on that. But what that means is we receive an award for being able to agree to disagree, talk about things, and move forward in the best interest of children. So, I definitely want to thank my colleagues for that because it would not be possible without you guys for us to be able to receive that award. Thank you.
Board member Cornell, second time.
Yeah, on page, I just want to reiterate, on page 5, it says 297 students came from outside SES, and they signed up. So, that, Mr. Johnson, that could be, here it says almost, it could be almost $3.9 million if they all come, right?
Correct.
So, this is kind of like a lost leader, and they call it in business, you get them in, and then you make money on them. So, we're, this is running the school system like a business and education at the same time.
Yeah, I think to Dr. Ray's point, this is definitely an opportunity to bring more kids into the district, also retain kids that we have, and then grow those kids academically. Again, I can't say how much. I think this is a great initiative that produces a high academic return on investment. And we did this with braided funding. So, we did this with Title I funds and state and local funds as well. And we're exploring how we can spend this more and braid more funds together to make a greater impact.
I'm sorry. You might actually could use one-time money, knowing that it's going to have a reoccurring payback. It would only be used one time, but the payback would continue throughout the time of the child in the school, the students in the school.
Absolutely.
Also, board members, I want to mention this to Dr. Griffin's point. We were very intentional about school administration and this being a breeding ground for training principals. So, we had, I think, maybe two principals that worked the Summer Learning Academy to go on to be our traditional school principals for the year. So, we really wanted to give young assistant principals, PLC coaches, the opportunity to lead. And so, this was a good way to identify potential principals.
So, board member Cornell, just to, so you don't leave the wrong impression with people, we did not make money. If we, you know, if we were making money on children, we wouldn't have budget shortages, and we'd be able to do anything we wanted to do. It's revenue. It's not bottom line. There's something that comes between revenue and making money. Let's call cost.
If I may, I'm not saying make a profit. I'm just saying that we can get reoccurring money to help us with our overheads since we're losing so many students. Is that, is that a way to say it?
More accurate, yes.
Okay. No, I don't think we're making, we're not making a profit on this. We're just trying to cover what we're already doing.
So, next, we'll move to the special order. So, next, we'll move to the special order of... Oh, I'm sorry, General Counsel's report. The board. Okay. So, now, we'll move to the special order of business, which is nine-one, first, the election of the Shelby County Board of Education Chairman for the two thousand seventeen eighteen year, and I will entertain nominations in seconds. Oh, I'm sorry, no seconds required. So, I see Mr. Orgel.
Ms. Shante Avent.
Board Member Woods.
Can I nominate myself?
Yes, you can.
I'm just joking, guys. Ms. Cole, you got nervous, didn't you? So, since I have my light, I'll take that second.
So, seeing no other lights, and last call for nominations, and seeing none, I guess we'll take a vote, please.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Avent.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Chair Caldwell.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
Congratulations, Chairman Avent. So, we'll move to the next order of business, which is the election of the Shelby County Board of Education Vice Chairman. And we'll receive nominations now. I see Board Member Bibbs has light.
I nominate Stephanie Love.
Board Member Avent.
Second.
Oh, seconds. It's nice, though, because he told me.
We'll give her the...
She'll learn when she's chair.
We'll give her the parliamentary book.
I'll be talking directly to you.
So, so seeing no more lights, we are ready to take a vote.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Avent.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs. Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Chair Caldwell.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
And congratulations, Vice Chairman Love. So, seeing no new board business, we'll move to the consent agenda. And I believe if anybody wants any items removed, please say so. First, I see Board Member Orgel's light.
Ms. Cole, you cut me off for the last time since this is your last meeting, but I wanted to ask you a question or just make a statement, if I could, about the election. I meant to pop it before. I think it's wonderful for our board, and this is about the fourth time in a row it's happened, that the nine, or it was seven, whatever of us, all got together in this room. And I was being clear, no, no, and came to the same conclusion and had uncontested basically Vice Chairman and Chairman of the Board. And your election was the same way last year as was yours, and then I think Teresa was two years prior to that. And so, I think that...
I don't think yours was, though.
Well, but it was a different time. And...
It certainly was.
And... But we moved on. But I just think it says a lot for the way we treat each other, and you never see anybody saying something about each other in the media. We all get along very well, and I think come from diverse backgrounds, represent different areas, and I think it's a...
Are you making a campaign speech?
Absolutely not. What I'm saying is I'm complimenting my fellow board members
Okay, thank you. I'm giving you liberty, okay?
Which we conduct our business.
All right, thanks. I see lights with Board Member Love and Board Member Avent. Since Board Member Avent's going to be the chair, I'm going to let her speak first.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Usually, the new incoming chair gets to say just a few words, and I did want to say...
All your time.
Yeah, I did want to say a thank you to our current Chair, Mr. Caldwell, because he has for sure led us down a great footprint of accountability within our district that I want, you know, under my years of leadership, I hope to continue that same accountability and transparency. But I also want to thank my colleagues because echoing Mr. Orgel's sentiment, I think utilizing the diversity and skill set that we bring to this board will continue to help us really intentionally thinking about student-focused academic achievement. So, I appreciate the goodwill effort of my board fellow colleagues in electing me Chair of this board, but I do appreciate more that we have the kind of staff and administration that will support the work that we have moving forward. It's a tough uphill battle, but not anything that we cannot accomplish working together.
Thank you. So, getting prepared for next month, next, I have Vice Chair Love's light on.
I actually didn't hit my light for that, but since you called my name. Congratulations to...
Get back.
Board Member, well, I'm sorry, Chair Avent. I look forward to the great things that we are going to do as board members. And I'm not going to say thank you. I've already thanked you, so I'm going to leave that alone.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for not thanking me. But so, now, I think we're through unless Mr. Orgel has any more speeches to make. Sure, why not? You know, it's my last meeting. Make me stay here two hours longer, okay? All right. So, as I was asking earlier, does anybody want to remove anything off the consent agenda? This time, this time, put your lights on for that. All right, now, I see soon-to-be Vice Chair Love.
Chair Caldwell, I would like to move Agenda Item twelve point one seven from the consent agenda to the action, request action, request for action.
All righty. And so, that will be item thirteen points...
Three got pulled.
Thirteen points three, I believe.
Yeah. Well, three got pulled.
So, that now becomes thirteen three.
And I would, I'm sorry. And I would like to pull Item twelve point eight.
That'll be thirteen four.
Okay, Item twelve eight now becomes Item thirteen four. So, minus items, and so let me read the amount in the consent agenda for the listening public. First will be the twelve-one, the Head Start Funding Application. It's recommended the Board of Education approves a childhood early division proposal for the Head Start for twenty-three million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Twelve point two is a voluntary pre-K grant in the amount of nine million, nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. Item twelve-three, Touchstone Training LLC Software and Products for Early Childhood in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. Twelve-four is the Imagination Station Inc., Station License for Early Childhood in the amount of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixteen. Item twelve-five, Shelby County Government Board of Education's Grant Award to Early Childhood in the amount of one million, eight hundred and three thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. Twelve-six, the McGraw-Hill Education Digital Curriculum Blended Learning in the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, forty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Item twelve-seven, Infrastructure Inc., Professional Development for Canvas Learning Management System, one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Next is Item twelve-nine, Memphis Area Transit Authority Bus Cards in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars. Item twelve-eleven, HVAC Replacements Phase Two, Burclair Elementary in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars. Item twelve-twelve, Interior Painting in Bellevue Middle School in the amount of two hundred and four, two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Item twelve-thirteen, I believe this is produced from inside the county, direct to schools from the USDA, and that's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Item twelve-fourteen, which is outside the county, outside the country, twelve point four fruits and vegetables, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Twelve-fifteen, food storage equipment, freezer, cooler rentals for an amount of one hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Twelve-sixteen is the September two thousand eighteen budget amendment where we approved some adjustments for, within the new resolution. And that concludes the consent agenda. So, I can't read lips. That's the consent agenda.
You missed the MLK resolution.
The resolution got moved. That was Ms. Love's resolution that got pulled because she has not read it publicly yet. So, that was the one that went, Item thirteen point three, which made the West Ed thirteen four.
Okay.
Okay.
So, sorry, point of clarification. I thought she said Item twelve point seven in structure.
That's the second one she pulled. She pulled two items.
Twelve point eight.
West Ed and the MLK. Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. So, I think we're on the same page. So, now, with that, take a vote to approve the consent agenda. Do we need a motion?
Board Member Jones.
Okay. I think the parliamentarian would like to speak to...
Just for everybody's info, there's two places in ROR where an assumed motion is allowed, and it's on regular business, doing the minutes, because it's a regular function. It can be an assumed. So can the consent agenda if it's an organization that uses consent agenda, which you do.
Thank you. So, I guess we're ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick. Board Member Avent.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Chair Caldwell.
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That passes unanimously, which takes us now to thirteen-one. Board Member Orgel's favorite topic, advanced ed accreditation fees in the amount of one hundred and eighty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. I see no lights. Can I...
Brad Leon called me a couple times and explained it to me, and I'm satisfied.
Chief Leon, can you put that on your calendar for the next three years to call them before this comes on? Thank you. I need a motion in a second, not for Mr. Leon to put that on his calendar, but for the consent agenda.
Motion.
I mean thirteen-one. Now, you got me going.
Board Member Jones.
Aye.
Board Member Orgel.
Aye.
Board Member Woods.
Aye.
Board Member Love.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick.
Aye.
Board Member Avent.
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs.
Aye.
Board Member Cornell.
Aye.
Chair Caldwell. You have nine ayes.
That motion passes. Next, we move on to Item thirteen-two, which is Long-Term Disability in the amount of three million, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I need a motion in a second, then we'll take comments. Any particular kind of motion? Is it to approve it? Okay, right, okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Board Member Orgel, and seconded by Board Member Woods. So, now, we're ready for lights and questions and comments. All right, I see no lights. I guess we're ready. I'll start with Board Member Love. I think I saw your light. Come on first.
Thank you, Chair. As I stated last week, I'm not happy with this vendor. And I, but I do have a couple of questions. I know that the contract, it was pulled last year, I think August of last year. What was the reason?
Hello, okay. Board Member Love, the reason that we pulled it and did not actually bring it to the board was because we did not send a special notification or invitation to the existing individual vendors that we had as part of our plan. So, that was the reason that we pulled it. It wasn't due to any inconsistencies in the process itself, but we wanted to make sure that we extended an invitation to the existing vendors, although they sell currently to our employees in individual program, and we had released a bid for a group-sponsored.
And I also want to know about, how does Mercer, how do they get paid? They get paid from the benefits or...
Mercer actually gets paid through commissions from our various benefit programs. I think last week I did try to explain the commission structure. But I will say, the difference with the commission arrangement or agreement that we have with Mercer is there's actually a scope of work, and they provide services back to the district for the work that they do. One thing that, a comment that was made tonight by one of the existing vendors related to commissions, they also receive commissions, but one of the issues that we have is because their individual plans, it's not transparent. We don't know what the commissions exactly are based off of what we have seen. Sometimes their commission structure is more than double of what Mercer has proposed in this current arrangement, and we do not get any services in return because those are individual plans. So, the commissions go straight to the agent with no, with no benefit to the district in terms of getting additional services that could benefit our employees.
So, does the district pay Mercer?
Through commissions. We don't, we do not cut Mercer a separate check. They're paid through the commission structure from the various vendors. For example, they do have commissions built into the Cigna program, so Cigna will send a check directly to them. Their current scope of work is about three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars a year. And I will say, they have not increased their base price for the last several years. There is an existing bid at this point for an RFP out for a health plan consultant, but Mercer has been the consultant for the last few years with no increase in their base cost.
And when the contract was pulled, I'm sorry, when the, when this was pulled from the agenda last year, who was the receiving vendor? Who was the, was there a vendor that was already selected?
I think last year, the vendor that had won the bid was, was, was it UNUM? It was UNUM.
So, was MetLife in that process last year?
I have to confirm if MetLife. I think they did bid last time, but I will have to confirm that with the procurement department and our staff. I can't remember. I think that we originally released this in the spring of last year, the spring of 2016.
Okay, so that's what I'm confused with. If MetLife was, MetLife was in the bidding last year, and you said UNUM won?
Yes, UNUM won the bid last time. We sent it out. We made sure we adhered to the procurement process. The only reason it was pulled last time was because we did not send a special notification to the existing vendors, which is American Fidelity, Colonial, and Affleck. So, we decided to pull it and re-release it to make sure that they had an opportunity to quote on it. We made sure we kept them engaged through the entire process so that they knew that they had an opportunity, just as others, to bid on the RFP.
So, when they resubmitted their application, did they put something different in there?
Are you referring to MetLife?
Both.
Both?
MetLife and the whoever, UNUM, because they won the contract first, right? So...
Yes.
And the reason why you pulled it was because you didn't notify everybody. But if MetLife and UNUM were already in the existing RFP, and the award was given to UNUM, why does MetLife have it now? Was there something different that MetLife put in the, in their application?
We did not compare the previous bid against the bids that we currently receive, and I'm not sure. I would have to check with procurement to see if that's even allowable for us to use the information from the prior bid that we said that we took off the table when we re-released it and we received new bids. I'm not sure if we're able to actually compare the two. I'm not sure if we're able to actually compare the two. I know that, I can say that did not happen, we did not compare the two bids, meaning the previous one versus the re-release this go-round.
So were the same people in the process to, I guess, review the application to?
Yes ma'am, the RFP committee, we always make sure we have representation from our teachers, actually, Mr. Williams, he was part of the RFP committee, we also choose a teacher, Ms. Frazier, she's part of the committee, as well as representation from our various other employment groups. We make sure we have representation from like our CNC area, our facilities and warehouse employees. We make sure we have a diverse group on that RFP committee, and that's with every benefit RFP that we release.
So if you had the same people, same vendors, and the only issue was you didn't notify other vendors, I'm trying to see what happened, what happened? Did the, did the team overlook something the first time? Did, I mean, was there something else submitted?
No, we score independently based off of what we receive at that particular time. So the information that we received the second go-round, it was compared, I think we always publicly announce that we have an RFP out. We do try to make sure that we contact vendors that we think would be able to service an account of our size, but it's always a public process, and that's part of the procurement process. But we always want to make sure that we just reach out to the current vendors to at least notify them, and that's what we did this time. So we received responses from nine vendors. Of the existing vendors, for the individual policies, I think two of them quoted, one did not. And we received responses from seven others. But as far as why the committee, why the decision was different this time as opposed to last time, I do think we have to look at each RFP process independent of each other, and that's the way the process goes. That we rate it based off of what was quoted this time during this part of the process.
Board member Avant?
Ms. Small, so I guess the challenge when looking at how the process happened this time for the procurement process versus why you pulled the vendor the last time, with the percentage points in your, I guess in the rating scale, there's not much difference between them. So if it was, I guess if they were the recommended vendor before, when you did this process, but they're not the recommended vendor, with the slight difference in the rating scale, that's, I guess, to board member Love's point, what is the huge difference that would have happened over the years' time if all you did was rebid the process?
I think it's very similar to what happened with the life insurance. So when we released the bid the first time, we got the quotes back, and we also had the renewal from the existing vendor. Well, when you go through the re-release process, a lot of times vendors will know what other folks have quoted. So when they are responding for the second time, they oftentimes had information that they didn't have during their previous bid. So just as with the life insurance, we ended up with a different vendor that came in with a much lower rate. But the reason for some of that is because the information was shared in terms of how a vendor would respond or a competitor would respond during the initial RFP process. So similar with this, we went through the bid once, the reason we pulled it was because we did not send the special invitation to the existing vendors. So that becomes public information once it's out there. So other vendors, other competitors can see what the original quote was. So when it goes out again, they're able to use that information as they're preparing their responses to the re-release bid. So very similar to life insurance.
Yeah, so inherently that process is a little flawed, because vendor B then benefits from what you would have recommended for vendor A.
Yes ma'am, that can happen, just like with, again, the life insurance, which is why we got such drastically different rates when we re-release the bid as opposed to the first time.
But these, the rates in the rating scale don't show these as drastically different?
In terms of the various components of the scoring rubric?
There was one, there was a response that you sent back to us, I guess the board office circulated a response, and over time it didn't seem as if vendor A, the one that the district is recommending, over time gives as much value back to the employees as vendor B.
I think you're referring to the performance guarantees, and the performance guarantees, like I think we talked about this a little bit last week, that's just a way to ensure that the company really has, or the selective vendor has skin in the game, and that we hold them to what they're quoting in terms of their contract and their response to us. So, and the answers that were circulated as it relates to the performance guarantees, and vendor A, I assume we're calling vendor A, MetLife, they put more up in terms of how much we are putting at risk if we don't meet these specified requirements in terms of performance. So actually the amount that they put at risk was slightly more than the other vendors. And the performance guarantees, that's just, you know, that's one component of the entire scoring rubric. But it's just how much the vendor is willing to put at risk if they don't perform in the way in which they have committed to perform. But that's a small portion, that's not the actual premium or the rate that the employees will be paying. So, you know, I think a lot was said tonight, and there are a couple of things that I do want to make sure that we clear up. This is not replacing anything. This is only an additional option for employees to have for short-term disability. We currently have a group-sponsored long-term disability program, and we have the options, the three options that employees can exercise through these individual vendors. We received feedback from employees that they wanted a group-sponsored option with more competitive rates for short-term disability. So this is simply another option for them to be able to choose from. They can keep what they have, or if they want to select this new program, they can do that, it is an opt-out program. But there, we've had those types of programs in the past, and they work well, as long as we are communicating when we're rolling the plan out. And there are built-in audit reports that we'll receive monthly, every ninety days, to make sure that employees know what they have. So again, this is not replacing anything, we're not taking an option away from any employee. Actually, it's giving them an additional option at a more competitive price, which is what employees, some employees have asked us to do.
Board member Bibbs?
Thank you Chair, actually, a lot of my questions have been answered. I just do kind of come back to ultimately, as I said on last week around, and really quite honestly, incoming chair has stated regarding procurement, our procurement process, this is another example of why we need to have better handles in place. I'm super concerned about how, if someone was going to be awarded a contract, and then because of something on our end happened, then we do something different, and then now we're coming back and saying that that person is no longer meeting the needs? But quite honestly, you can't really tell me why the person you selected is meeting the needs either. So that to me just is alarming all the way around. I guess I'm just concerned when, I think Ms. Avant asked around, and I remember asking last week, what was the true difference? And no one, I was told that I would get the true difference this week, and I still haven't received that.
You know, I think in terms of how I respond to that, and let me just make sure I phrase this properly, so that we communicate our point across, when we re-release the bid, we do have to look at the responses that are submitted as part of that bid. And I think that's why we try to make sure we have a diverse RFP committee, because they score. So the committee, which was comprised of teachers, we had representation from our teaching population as well as other employee populations, this is how the committee scored, and this is the recommendation that we're bringing forth. So based off of what was submitted this time, through the RFP process, the committee scored vendor A or MetLife, they scored them higher, based off of what was received this time, not the previous bid. We didn't have that information, we didn't bring that information with us. We scored this bid independently, based off of what was responded to as part of this process. Not sure if that helps any, but.
Board member Cornell?
I'm neither passionately for or against, I'm trying to understand. If we got, if they accepted a bid, but we have two others that bid that weren't accepted, does that mean that, and since this is not excluding, does this mean that the employees can get any of the three? Can payroll deduct any of the three bids?
Not any of the three bids, and let me be clear, nine vendors responded to the RFP. We chose three finalists based on their RFP responses. So what we're talking about now are the three finalists. Of those three finalists, the committee voted, one vendor was selected because they got the highest score, which was MetLife, and that's the recommendation the district is bringing to the board. Now, employees will still have the option of the three individual vendors that offer the individual policies. They will still have the option to keep those plans, we will continue to payroll deduct for those. Again, this is just an additional option.
Now, if someone's selling three thousand disability policies to teachers right now, the current teachers can still payroll deduct that?
That's correct.
And if a new teacher decides that they like what those three thousand they're getting, can they now sign up and payroll deduct that?
They sure, they certainly can.
So, so what's the purpose of a bid?
As indicated, I think the primary difference, the plans that teachers currently have the option to get through an individual basis where we payroll deduct, those plans are more expensive because they're individual policies. So for example, we have an employee on our team, she pays eighty-three dollars a paycheck for her disability insurance. Under the proposed vendor, if she gets, if she chooses the benefit, very similar in terms of benefit, payment schedule, all of that, her premiums will be reduced almost by half, actually more than half, her premiums will reduce that much. Because it's a group-sponsored plan, you get the benefit of group rates. And that, again, that was based off of the feedback from employees. We did not offer as a district, a group-sponsored short-term disability solution for our employees. So the recommendation that we're bringing is just that. We're not taking away their other options, but we're offering a group-sponsored product at a much more competitive price if the employee chooses to go that route.
So if, so you're saying that the employees that have insurance now and have it payroll deducted are not going to be part of a group anymore?
They never have been, those are individual policies. So for example, if an employee has an issue with their policy through one of the three vendors, the district benefits department cannot assist them, because they would have to go through their agent. Those are individually written policies. What we are talking about tonight is a group policy, meaning that there is an agreement with the vendor and with the district, and we're able to secure group rates, which are more competitive, and we help manage that plan and that program.
Okay, so until you did the bid sometime, you know, some time ago, there was never, no one ever bid and won a disability contract until now?
We had never released, as far as I've been with the district for about thirteen years, during my tenure, we had not released an RFP for a group-sponsored short-term disability vendor. We had not. When we merged, we did, Legacy Shelby County Schools had a group long-term disability coverage program in place for their employees. So when we merged, we began to offer that for all employees. But as I indicated, we received some feedback that employees also wanted an option to have a short-term disability policy that was sponsored through the district.
And so they're going to end up paying unless they opt out?
Yes, it is, it is an opt-out program, so it's auto-enrolled. But the initial rollout will occur during open enrollment, and open enrollment is where we do a lot of communication, a lot of communications, and again, this is completely voluntary. At any time they don't want it, they let us know, if we've taken any premiums, they're refunded. That's how voluntary benefits operate. It's not, it's not like our core, it's not part of our core benefit program, like our health, like our medical insurance, or like our group-sponsored life insurance. This is a completely voluntary insurance product. At any time if they don't want it, they can cancel it, and any premiums that were taken, they can be refunded.
I'm kind of concerned about, you know, you order pills, you order some pills, they'll make you a genius, and they don't, but they keep charging until you finally write them and tell them to quit charging, and then you've paid and paid and paid. That kind of worries, that kind of worries me. I mean, people have gotten caught up in that before. But you're saying that any, so for how long can they pay and get their money back?
How long can they pay?
Well, what if they do, what if it goes three months and they realize that it's on their paycheck? Do they just get one month back, or they get all three?
I think we would have to take those on a case-by-case basis, I think it would go, if a person has submitted a claim,
Oh, no.
Then there would not be, so I think like, I can't give you a straight answer on that, we would have to take it on a case-by-case basis. But as we always do, we try to make sure that we work with employees, and where we can provide assistance, and do refunds, and help them through any specific situations, we'll do that, that's what we do on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Board member Orgel?
So, we had a committee that included some teachers, Ms. Small?
Yes, sir.
Included staff, others.
Yes, sir.
We did a grading system.
Yes, sir.
And then I read the chart last week, and I read it again just a minute ago, so I'll make sure. So if you add all the things together, there were, I could look at your matrix, but you can add them all together. For the teachers, that, and I guess it includes, or the staff, the cheapest alternative was MetLife, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the second least expensive was Fidelity, was it Fidelity?
Unum.
Unum, and then, well, I just took and added all together, and then the third was Standard.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and they're all big companies, I looked up their market caps, I mean, they're all a respectable company, there's nothing wrong with that. So, if we pay, if we select one that's not on your list, will the teachers then pay more for the same benefit? Because I was just looking at the numbers. Like, is MetLife less expensive per month for like the disability, short-term, seven-day, short-term, thirty-day, and then the other was long-term disability? Is it less expensive for our teachers to select MetLife, who you guys have put forth?
Yes, sir, it is, yes, sir.
You got the dollar figure, I mean, I was curious.
I think when we, oh, here it is, when we look at total aggregate premium, in some cases, MetLife was like a million or more dollars less.
No, that's not what I mean, like, you were talking about eighty dollars a month?
Oh, the employees' actual premium, yes, sir. Yes, sir, because the per-unit rate is less.
And that's, when you take that aggregate amount?
Yes, I was giving you aggregate.
Whatever that fraction becomes is the difference in price.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The rates are based on age, but the per-unit cost is cheaper with MetLife. Again, because it's, primarily because it's a group-sponsored program.
And we're going to payroll deduct for them, we don't pay a share, but we payroll deduct?
Correct, there is no district contribution.
So how many employees now have not opted out? How many employees are on the plan?
So currently, as I indicated, we do have a group-sponsored long-term disability program. Right now, we have about forty-two hundred employees enrolled in that group long-term disability program, so that's about forty percent of our total benefit eligible employees. And of those, those three vendors that offer the individual programs, they, according to our records, our payroll records, they have about thirty-three hundred employees that are enrolled in one of those individual plans.
What happens to the other nine hundred, between thirty-three hundred and forty-two hundred?
Because the benefits- Because the benefits are voluntary. They can choose to get it or not. They don't have to get the coverage.
I thought 4,200 people got it.
Yes, sir, they do. But we have, we have about 10, about 10, 10 or 11,000, between 10 and 11,000 benefit eligible employees. So not all of them choose to participate.
4,200 participate.
4,200 participate in the group sponsored, long-term disability program that the district currently offers.
What's the 3,300 number?
The 3,300, those are the employees that participate in the individual disability programs through the three vendors, American Fidelity, Colonial, and Aflac.
All right, so American Fidelity, Colonial, and Aflac weren't recommended, and they're payroll deducted at the moment, right?
They currently are payroll deducted and will continue.
So if, if Ms. Small, you have Aflac, and you're taking out $39.12 every pay period, you can continue to take out $39.12 every pay period as long as they offer you that policy, right?
Yes, sir.
Or you can switch to whatever we vote on tonight.
Yes, sir, if you want. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correct.
But we're not gonna add any more other than those three, plus if it includes one of the, one of those three is who we select tonight. We're not gonna add any more. We're just gonna...
We're not adding.
Have those three, and then whatever we get tonight.
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks.
Board Member Jones, is your light still on?
So I guess my question is a little bit different, maybe it's been addressed, but I'm familiar with this from a personal standpoint because I learned today that we have a new insurance carrier, and it's the same situation. There's gonna be, the one I have is not the one that was selected, and unlike the, this district, they're not going to allow payroll deduction. They are trying to encourage that we go with the new vendor. I decided that I'd just go to my bank and have them deducted that way if I want to keep that. But that's, that's just my personal choice. But ours is not opt-in or opt-out. You have to opt-in. They don't automatically enroll you in anything. And so is there a particular reason why we, we opt-in and then require them to opt-out?
That was how we were able to get the most competitive rates. And out of the, the nine respondents, several of them have programs that are structured that way, where they're, where they are opt-in programs. That's, that's how we're able to get the more competitive rates. But there have often been times where during like an open enrollment process where there is action absolutely required by the employee. So that's why we really, really ramp up our communication efforts. We do posters, mailings, phone calls. We have in-person sessions. So that's something that we really, really will make sure that we focus on during open enrollment. And we've talked about putting structures in place that allow us to continue to monitor it. Like for, because employees will still be able to continue to keep everything, what we always want to make sure of is that an employee knows if they're overinsured or double-covered. So we've already talked about what type of audit reports do we need to put in, in place so that we can make sure that we're notifying employees like every 90 days. We just want you to know, you have these two insurance plans. Just double-check to make sure that, you know, you're not overinsured or double-covered. Some employees may want that, and that's fine, but we just want to make sure that they're aware of what they have.
So I guess my last comment, initially when this came, this surfaced as an agenda item, I think we pulled it once. So I received a lot of pushback why, about the deductions. And quite frankly, I talked to you, I talked to Superintendent, I, I wanted to know if there was a cost. Because if there was not going to be a cost for those individual policies, then I might, I think my word, why don't we be nice and just let them stay down?
That's where your word is.
Payroll deduction, although most banks will draft at no cost, but being it here and there. And so I do appreciate the Superintendent for agreeing to allow, continue to allow that deduction. The choice of having a single vendor, it, it appears to be the way most organizations are going. Who that's been a video, I think we've had conversations about that. So I'm pleased that they're gonna continue those deductions for the current members, and so that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Board Member Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You indicated that SES will not be paying anything for this benefit. So I'm looking at the, the return on investment for the district. Obviously, you had indicated that this is a value add for employees at the group rate. What constitute a group rate? Meaning like, could we have gotten the same value if 1,000 employees participated in it, 500 participated in it? Did you, did they have a maximum number of, of units that must be enrolled in order to get a group rate?
So there is a minimum participation requirement of 25%, and we feel comfortable and confident that we will achieve that because as I indicated earlier, even with the group sponsored, long-term disability program, we currently have about 40% of our benefit eligible population in that program. So we feel confident that we will get that 25% participation.
And what happened if we don't?
If we don't, we'll have to go back and renegotiate the rate.
And did, did, did the winning provider require 25% or did they all require 25%?
And the winning bidder did require the 25%. I think all of them did have a minimum participation requirement, but I would have to confirm that with Ms. Poindexter or our procurement team. But even for some of, like our life insurance, most of your ancillary voluntary-type benefits do require some minimum participation requirement, particularly in the group, in the group form, just to be able to get the, the most cost-effective rate.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I was just saying if we're comparing apples to apples, I'm interested to know if MetLife set a higher bar for you than the, than others. And if they did, and that's what gave them the lower, a lower cost point, I mean, it's based on they're getting more units. But if someone else said you only have to have 10%, and there's a small variance in the amount they're charging, then is that really a better deal? So that's what I would just be curious, who, of, what was the minimum unit requirement from other vendors?
We can certainly get that information for you, we, as part of...
Well, it won't help because we're gonna vote on it tonight, but, because, so I will say that it does, so Madam Chair, not Madam Chair, it used to be Madam Chair, but Ms. Jones helped me draw my conclusion of, of being able to support the district's recommendation. But I would encourage you all to look at that to see, you know, our, our ability to hit the minimum because we're opting everyone in. I think, I would just look at any unintended consequences of that. You know, again, Teresa's point about the city's process of, no, no one's in, and we're gonna have a hand-holding process to help everybody get in the system, seems to be a more effective process of making sure you're not having people pay anything that they don't want or didn't, didn't ask for. And then the other thing, I think you did answer the question about the discounted rates. You said there is a, a minimum requirement. And, and so that actually conclude, concludes my questions for right now.
And, and I will say, just as a follow-up, I think that's what we would prefer is not to have the opt-in, but because we still wanted to allow employees to have the choice of the other vendors, that did change, that did change things in order, as it relates to how we were going to be able to get the most competitive rate. And as part of the RFP process, we have to include census information, which is not any individually identifiable information, but it does include information about our group, including who currently participates. So that's why, for the most part, as the vendors are looking at our RFP, they already have an idea of what our participation looks like, and they normally set those minimum participation requirements somewhere within the threshold of the current participation.
Thank you.
So we have a couple more lights, but I just wanna go over this one, one more time, so. So MetLife has a 25% minimum participation. That's 2,500 people. You already got 4,000 now. The reason they do that, because they, because they do the numbers and they know what the, the average number of claims are, so that's why they set the minimum at that. Worst case, that, that happens if they, if they get below 25, that they're, they're gonna raise the rates. But there are three other vendors that, that employees can, can choose that they're currently being deducted for. And if somebody's being deducted twice, I would imagine it's not gonna take your notice to them, they're gonna be watching their paycheck from, from the conversations we hear up here, and, and they'll call you. So, so, and there's no way the district can end up requiring, the only thing that, the cost to the district is anything you choose to do through labor of, of supplying those notifications to them?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Board Member Bibbs.
Thank you, Chair. So a lot of my questions have been answered, but I think Board Member Woods brought up something, just like you did regarding this 25% threshold. I don't feel comfortable voting on something if I don't know what the threshold is for everyone, because that's a major difference. Because if we don't meet 25%, then we're gonna have to go back and change those numbers. So you mean to tell me out of the other, I guess your top three, did Unum have a participation, participation rate? Did Standard have a participation standard rate?
So, as I said, we would like to be able to confirm what those exact minimum participation requirements were. Ms. Poindexter did confirm that Unum, they did quote a minimum participation percentage of 20%. And I, and normally the way it works for the minimum participation requirement is the company reserves the right to renegotiate the rate. And like I said, we have that for many of our existing benefit programs. We have, because we're a large group, a lot of times we're not in danger of doing that. But even in other organizations I've worked in, when we have not met the minimum participation requirement, the vendor has not really changed the price because it's a lot of work to go back and, and try to renegotiate and have their underwriters to look at it. It's a, it's a process. So most of the time, the vendors really try to honor what they've quoted, and the way that the verbiage is, is written is that they just reserve the right to go back and look at the rate, not saying that that absolutely will happen.
Okay. Board Member Ray, I think your second time as well.
So Met, the vendor B participation rate was lower than vendor A.
The minimum participation.
The minimum participation rate.
You're calling Unum vendor, vendor B.
Well, A is what you recommended.
Yes.
So I was giving them the higher rating since you recommended MetLife as the vendor. So with the minimum participation rate at 20%, does that mean that their unit price, when you're thinking about the unit price, apples to apples, would that be an accurate comparison? And what the premiums would be for employees based on the unit price and the minimum participation rate?
We didn't, we, I don't think we specified a minimum participation requirement. As I said, we released census information and the current participation that we have. And so with our current participation rate being at 40%, I think, you know, most vendors just made sure they came in under that because they know at a minimum we can meet where we are now, because that's the requirement. But I do think in terms of selecting the vendor, the minimum participation requirement was under the, the general minimum requirements section or component of the rubric, and accounted for a small, a small portion of that, of that weight, which was 15%.
Okay.
On the actual scoring rubric. So that was, in terms of the overall scoring, that wasn't a separate category with a major weight attached to it.
The unit price wouldn't have been a major weight?
No, the minimum participation requirement.
But that would affect the minimum, what the unit price would be based on the number of folks that are enrolled, would it not?
The, the rates are, the rates are quoted based off of the maximum participation.
Okay.
The maximum, not the minimum.
All right. Thank you.
Board Member Cornell.
Let's see, on the chart, second time, it says 2017 short-term slash long-term disability. I, I thought this was short-term.
The con, the conversation really has shifted towards short-term. What we are recommending is, we have currently a long-term disability program and vendor in place. We released a bid for a short-term, a group sponsored, short-term and long-term disability vendor. That was the RFP. A lot of the conversation has shifted towards short-term because that's where we currently do not have a group sponsored offering. But this is a complete program, both short-term and long-term.
And what's the length of time difference between short-term and long-term?
The, the length of difference, can you clarify?
I mean, short-term disability, if you get disabled, do you get X number of years in the nursing home or something? I mean, what's the?
Oh, you're talking, are you, are you referring to?
The time that you're getting short-term versus the longer term?
There are, there are two options an employee can choose from with different elimination periods. So let's see, for example, the employee can choose a program that has a, a seven-day waiting period, as well as one that has a 30-day waiting period. And for the short-term disability, I think it goes up to six months. And the long-term disability, at, at a minimum 100 and, is it 120? 100. Ms. Poindexter, I'm gonna ask her just to clarify the actual long-term disability plan provision.
Okay, for, for the short-term disability is the first six months. And then after six months, you apply for the long-term disability, which it goes up to five years.
Five years, yeah.
Okay. Now, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pose a question for the attorney.
All right. Anytime you're ready.
Okay. We, I heard from a little bird told me that Mercer and MetLife are essentially working together as one company. And therefore, the question is, can Mercer write the specs for the bid and then also profit from the bid and also have its company bid, or a company it's affiliated with bid? And did you look at this and determine whether this was okay or not okay, or did not look at this?
You know, I don't know if I can answer a hypothetical question like that because there'd be a lot of factors to consider, but, but directly, that issue's not been presented to me for consideration.
Okay.
So I have one last, I have one last comment. So it looks like that MetLife was about $923,000 cheaper than, than Unum, correct? Looking at this? So you could reason that even if they, if their rate was 25% and the other one's 20%, that 5% difference is, is not gonna eat up, you know, where it would end up being more expensive if, if, if MetLife raised their rates? Because they're already almost a million dollars, you know, close to 25% lower in their price.
Yes, sir.
Maybe not 25%, but 20, 22, 28, 2 and 1/2%. Okay, that's fine, that's all I needed. I'm gonna support this. So I don't see any more lights, so I guess we're ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Orgul?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
No.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Avant?
No.
Board Member Bibbs?
No.
Board Member Cornell?
No.
Chair Caldwell? You have five ayes and four nays.
That motion passes. Next item is West Ed Parent Engagement Services. And that item is, she pulled it, it's up there.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Need a motion in a second. 13-3, what?
12.8.
No, it's 13-3 on the new agenda. It's West Ed Parent Engagement Services. If you go back on your, if you go out, then I can, it'll be on there.
We need a motion in a second to get it on the...
Yeah, I need a motion in a second to... So are we not, nobody's gonna make a motion to do anything on this one? All right, is it motion to accept the superintendent's recommend, administration's? All right, is it motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
We're, we're on it now for discussion, but it has to be moved a second before we talk. So do you wish to move its adoption?
No.
Is there anyone who will move the adoption? We have Avant moving.
Okay, Board Member Avant made the motion, and seconded by Board Member Jones. Now, now we can have discussion.
So I only have a couple of questions concerning this. This, this is a second-year contract? Okay, and with this second-year contract, so apparently we yielded results from this?
I'm sorry, what was that, Ms. Love?
Uh, we yielded results from this, this is.
We have, so last year, we started it as a pilot program. One of the things that we've added for this year was that we wanted to track academic data for the actual students that are participating in the court. So we're gonna be tracking that academic data. But last year, what we tracked was participation by the families, which was about 95 percent. And then we also surveyed families to ask them if they made a difference, and if it made, if it was helpful at home. And we had about a 92 approval rate from the families, and also the teachers.
Okay. So, the reason for me pulling this had nothing, it's nothing to do with the vendor. It's solely about me trying to ensure that, well, stating that if we can, the same work that this vendor is doing, if it can be done under the parent engagement department, being that Dr. Ray recently hired, I believe, 30, Dr. Ray, what is the name of the people that you hired?
Family Engagement.
Family Engagement Specialist?
We're in the process.
Process, I'm sorry, you're in the process. So, this is a one-year contract, right?
Right, so what we're, we've already started discussions with Dr. Paredes, who was the person that created the program. Her team was here a couple of weeks ago, so we can build a sustainability plan for the next three to five years. So, one of the things that we're adding in there is the possibility of extending the, the program and the best practices that are associated at the program that are across the board, because the reality is that we can't continue to pay $180,000 over and over again. So, the idea is that we're gonna use the next year to continue to build the capacity of the schools, and then the next year will be to build capacity among, once Dr. Ray and once the parent engagement team is fully formed, we will use that as a year to go through the full training process, and then they're able to sustain the program on their own, or we're able to sustain the program on the own, on our own SES, and then have actual APPT champions at all of the schools.
Okay.
That want to participate.
Okay, because that was my issue, because I actually did sit in on one of the meetings that they had. But my only concern is, I just feel like we, as a district, could provide those same services in-house, because basically, it's teachers, principals, and parents having a conversation. So, I know.
Right, so the idea was to create the pilot for at least three to five years, so we can have a full shift on parent engagement, because it does create a little bit of a shift for teachers and for families to understand that there's goals associated with it, that there's data that we have to track. So, really, it was just an opportunity to learn the program, and then the idea is that we'll be able to transition out of it as well.
Okay. And then this was under communications and community engagement when you guys were together?
Right, so the reason why we kept it under community engagement was because the person that was leading it from our team is under community engagement. So we didn't want the schools to have a negative impact. But as, and I've already talked to Dr. Alexander and Dr. Ray about it, that we will use this year to almost do some sort of like passing the torch type of plan, so then we can continue it on for, for the following years.
Okay. So, I think that's all, but that's, I just, that's the basic of it, the $180,000 to pay somebody to do the work that I feel like we can do in-house.
Mm-hmm, agreed, agreed.
Board Member Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, again, talk about return on investment for this particular product. Because, again, based on Ms. Love asked some really good questions here, if this is work that we can do, is this happening in some other districts? Can you give us data points to say they, they're proof points of why this organization has, has provided the type of information that we don't already know? You know, serving a large urban district, like, that we can't tap into existing talent of teachers, parents, who've given their life to this district, that can, that can give us feedback that we can implement right away?
Yeah, so there are, I can get you the exact stats on how many districts across the country implement academic parent teacher teams. The reason why we brought it in as a pilot program last year is because we wanted to really develop a good model and framework for how we're gonna approach parent engagement in our district. So we felt that academic parent teacher teams, given the fact that we are really, need to link all of our activities to, to, to learning, we felt that that was the best program that would allow us to ensure that those two pieces were connected. The program is very successful, there's, and I can get you specific statistics for other districts that have been implementing it for a number of years. So the idea is that we wanted to have a good model, a good framework, and then after that, build capacity within the district, so we can continue it on.
Any staff tied to this funding?
We have one staff member at the district that helps project manage the, the program at the district level, but every school has an APPT champion, and then they also have the administrative team, and all of the teachers are participating in the, in the training process. So we held, just for clarity, Mr. Woods, we held a two-day training with the administrative team at the school, and then every school selects an APPT champion, so they go through the two-day training. And then in addition to that, we do staff prep sessions at each of the school sites to help teachers understand the program, be part of the faculty meeting, and then prepare everything that they need to prepare for the sessions.
Okay, thanks.
Board Member Avant?
So, Ms. Powers, it, just as a follow-up to Ms. Love's question, and I appreciate her thoughtfulness, because I know how close she is to how the work happens on the ground. When we're thinking about how you brought this in-house, and you didn't think that that model engagement that you were able to do within the district is something that you could continue on without us having to, to engage a vendor to do that?
Right, so the, the only reason is because we wanted to have a proven model that had a good framework that we could utilize as far as training materials, and then really just building capacity even within our department, because we were a newly-formed department. So we just wanted to make sure that we were building the capacity, and that we had a really good model that we can just use it as a baseline. That's why it was considered a pilot.
Okay. And so, and the, and the information that you gathered from the first-year pilot in-house didn't yield you any of those things that you thought could be expanded without us employing a, a vendor to do that?
Yeah, so what we're doing, for example, for the schools that participated in the year, in the first year, so the eight schools that participated last year, we've actually started removing a little bit of the support systems that we've had created, because they've already implemented it for a full year, they've already developed that capacity within staff. So the idea is that we will have a full support system in year one, and then we will, we will remove supports on year two, and then year three, and moving forward, they can implement it on their own with us, without us having to have the vendor onboard. That doesn't look like I answered your question.
Well, I guess I was trying to understand, if you have the data in-house, and you've already, you've kind of built the program out, why, why do you need someone to regurgitate the, the information back to you? Which, and maybe that's, that's my interpretation of what you were saying.
So the data was positive, the parents received it well, the teachers received it well. I didn't feel like we had enough capacity, even after the restructure that we had on the family and community engagement team, to be able to, for us to do it on our own and ensure that it was successful. So the reality is that I needed support within my department to ensure that it was being implemented with fidelity.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Bibbs?
So I wasn't gonna say anything, because both my colleagues in, have actually asked a lot of questions, but I think because you answered the question in the way that you did, I think this is us really pushing back and giving a mandate around, before we start looking at outside vendors for everything that we do, let's figure out how to utilize the staff that we've approved to do this work, to, because I know, I guess the number's 30, that additional people that have, are coming from a team, Dr. Ray's team, and they're brand-new, I get. But I think at some point, we gotta start using the people that we are paying for in the budget. And I think that's what I'm hearing that's being said over and over again through the questions. I do know the work that APPT did, fan of it, think they did a great job last school year. A lot of my schools are gonna be in this second round, which is great, but we need to figure out how to touch all our schools through this work. And if that means figuring out how to utilize the people we have in different ways, then that's the stuff that we have to start doing, besides bringing us proposals of paying for another vendor.
Agreed, thank you.
Board Member Cornell?
Yeah, is this being spent to supplement rather than supplant the current people working in family outreach?
The bulk of the expense is for the training and technical support that we provide to all of the schools and teachers that are participating in the program.
Does this include, I would assume it includes Title I schools?
Yes, there's Title I schools.
But we haven't, we haven't let go Title I family outreach people at the same time we're doing this, have we?
I'm not aware, I don't know, Dr. Ray, you're able to respond, or Chief Johnson is able to respond?
Have we dismissed or failed to hire any Title I outreach people? Since we have this, doing outreach, so no?
Yeah, I could, that would be no. So the current folks who are funded with Title I, who's doing parent engagement, are still a part of the position, we still have those roles. And not only that, we made a commitment to adding 30 additional family specialists that will be funded out of this general fund.
Okay, and when they, when the administrative branch, not the teachers, but when the administrative employees get a salary increase, do they get the same 2 percent or something?
Yes, when we apply the salary increase, we have to apply even for our employees who are grant-funded as well. So we apply it across the board.
So I just have a couple of comments. I, you know, I, I thought the program sounded like it was well-structured. I was, I was somewhat disappointed in the presentation that we had in committee, and because I said there was no, we, we didn't tie it to, that it improved any outcomes. And so I was glad to hear that you're, you're doing that now. So, a little less on the fancy books and more on the data, so that we can feel comfortable that this is really moving the kids and connecting the parents and the, and the teachers, and that they're doing the things they need to do to help us lift, lift the academic performance, so.
Got it.
All right, last, second time, Board Member Love?
Is there a reason why it wasn't brought to us in June, in the summer, or July?
We were still going through the planning process of how we were gonna implement it this year. And then the contract that we had for last year covered the training up to this point.
Okay, because it says that the, that it will start on August 1st, 2017, and conclude June 30th, 2018. That's what I was asking, and let me ask you this. Is it, is it August 2017?
So, I don't remember the specific, but what, the way we did the planning process or the planning project with the vendor was that they will cover up to all the training that currently is taking place with the school. So, it's, it's not time-bound as to the planning process that we have with them. Contractually, it may be, but based on what we develop on the project plan, it covers us up to this point, so that's why it was brought forward this time.
Okay, so, I mean, if it is the will of the board, I don't know how we would do this. Paul Muntterian, how, how, can I ask a question to you? To him? So if I wanted to pull this, how, how would I go about asking the board members if it's the will of the board to send this to the agenda? I mean, I'm sorry, send this to the committee?
You can use a motion to send the committee.
Can I do that now, or do we have to close out?
If you have the floor, then it is your right to make that motion.
So I would like to make a motion to pull this and send this to the, well, I guess it would be a joint community engagement and academic committee meeting.
Discussion is limited to the wisdom of sending it to a committee.
Seeing no lights, we're ready to vote.
Board Member Jones?
I'm sorry, we got a light.
Oh.
There you go. That's funny.
Board Member, Board Member Orgel?
Board Member Jones, the last, I don't want the last thing I do as chair to deprive you of, of speaking. You sure? Okay. Now seeing no lights, we're ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chair Caldwell?
Aye.
You have nine ayes.
That is sent to committee, that motion passes. And now, we move to 13.4, and let's see, MLK 50 resolution. And, and we're all on, on there now, as we requested. I just remind Board Member, Board Member Love, soon-to-be vice chair, that you'll have your last day as vice chair, okay? Make this quick, please.
The shade, but I'm always quick, sir. Sometimes I explain a length of time, but. So really, really quick, this is a resolution extending the Shelby County Schools' support and collaboration with MLK 50. Whereas the Shelby County Board of Education believes that strong public support and community partnership are essential for our students to excel, and is committed to working collaboratively with all community stakeholders. And whereas April 4th, 2018 marks the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas the National Civil Rights Museum is planning a year-long celebration titled MLK 50 to commensurate the legacy of Dr. King. And whereas the NCRM is asking that nonprofit civil organizations, neighborhoods, local government, and educational institutions join the celebration by creating events that focus on the question, where do we go from here? And whereas the MLK 50 celebration is a wonderful learning opportunity for our students, as the National Civil Rights Museum has several events and programming that would permit the district to collaborate and allow students to showcase their vision and answer to the question posed by MLK 50. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shelby County Board, Board of Education supports the National Civil Rights Museum and MLK 50 community, community-wide initiative, and directs the superintendent to convene a working group to collaborate with the National Civil Rights Museum to create programming and events to commensurate the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Be it further resolved that the Shelby County Board of Education instructs the superintendent to provide monthly updates to the district's progress with MLK 50 events to the Community Engagement Committee. And this is submitted by every last board member at Shelby County Schools.
And so I'll accept this as the motion, and I will second the motion, so now we can have debate. Unless you wanna go back and make a motion. Seeing no lights, I would just like to say this, thank you for making this resolution, I think it's very important, and thank you for allowing all board members to be part of it, so good job. And with that, we're ready for a vote.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Orgel? Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Avant? Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Cornell?
Aye.
Chair Caldwell?
Yes, aye.
You have nine I votes.
And it's, that's, that motion passes, and this meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a nice evening.